Now 6:30 and I call to order this session of the Alamo County School Board. Mrs. Carlson, do you have a motion?
I do, Chair. I move that the board certified by recorded vote that to the best of each board member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from the open meeting requirements of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, and identified in the motion authorizing the closed meeting where heard, discussed are considered in the closed meeting.
Second.
Okay, it has been moved and second that we vote saying that the only thing that was discussed during the public session, I mean during the closed session, was what the order had called for. Mrs. Johnson, could you give us a roll call?
Ms. Lee? Yes? Ms. Osborne?
Yes.
Ms. Carlson?
Yes.
Dr. Acuff?
Yes.
Mr. Alcarro?
Yes.
Mr. Ober?
Yes.
Mr. Page?
Yes. All right, so the motion there is, we will now have a moment of silence. Okay, and we have this statement that should be read into the minutes. The minutes of this meeting should reflect that one, this meeting is being held electronically pursuant to Virginia state law and Alamo County ordinance, because the COVID-19 pandemic makes it impracticable and unsafe to assemble a quorum physically in a single location. And two, the meeting is being communicated to the public electronically through Zoom and streamlined live on the Alamo County Public Schools website. And three, public comment may be offered through the Zoom waiting room feature in accordance with the school board's protocol or by written submission. All right, with that said, could we have a motion to approve the agenda for tonight's meeting?
I move that we approve the agenda.
Second.
Okay, move by Mr. Alcarro, second by Ms. Lee that we approve the agenda. Ms. Johnston?
Ms. Osborne?
Yes.
Ms. Carlson?
Have we lost Ms. Carlson?
Oh, she's me. Dr. Acuff? Mr. Alcarro?
Yes.
Mr. Ober?
Yes.
Ms. Lee?
Yes.
Mr. Page?
Yes. All right, moving along, the approval of the consent agenda.
I move that we approve the consent agenda.
Is there a second? All right, moved by Mr. Alcarro, second by Dr. Acuff, that we approve the consent agenda.
Um, I'd like to-
Did you want to pull something before we?
Yeah, I didn't know if it came during discussion or what, but I'd like to pull item 3.5 for discussion.
Okay. All right, any other items to be pulled for discussion from consent? Okay, all right, so we'll have that discussion now. So, okay, Ms. Lee?
Um, yeah, I had a question about policy J F C A. It's the long-term teacher removal of students from class. And I noticed that the changes remove the possibility of either the teacher or the parents appealing the decision to the school board and makes the superintendent and designate decision final. And I just wanted to hear the reasoning behind that change before we vote on that.
I suggest holding that out for approval and I ask that I could consult with Ross and with our staff on the source of those changes so that we could answer that question. So I suggest, since it's not urgent, but thank you for pulling that and we will either be able to respond to it later on in the meeting during Board Superintendent Business, or we'll just research it and come back with it.
Okay. All right, Ms. Lee, what number was that?
J F C-
J F C A.
Okay. So I move that we approve the consent agenda with the exception of J F C A.
Second.
All right, we've heard that motion. Any discussion? All right, Ms. Johnston?
Um, Ms. Dr. Acuff?
Yes.
Mr. Alcarro?
Yes.
Mr. Ober?
Yes.
Ms. Lee?
Yes.
Ms. Osborne?
Yes.
Ms. Carlson?
Yes.
Mr. Page?
Yes. Okay, and we have now introduced the members of the board and sort of had our official mic check. So the members of the board introduced alphabetically, Dr. Kate Acuff.
Alphabetically, Kate Acuff, Jack Jewett District. Thank you, Graham.
All right, Mr. Jono Alcarro.
Jono Alcarro at large.
Ms. Malani Burkhart.
Malani Burkhart, Student Representative.
Thank you, Malani. Ms. Katrina Carlson.
Katrina Carlson, Ryo District.
Ms. Judy Lee.
Judy Lee, Ryvanna District.
Mr. Dave Ober.
Dave Ober, Whitehall Magisterial District.
And Ms. Ellen Osborne.
Ellen Osborne, Scottsville District.
Okay, and I'm Graham Page, Samuel Miller District. So with all of the preliminaries out of the way, we are now ready to move into our main items for tonight. All right, first, our public comment. Mrs. Carlson.
We have two people signed up for public comment and I will start by reading the public comment guidelines. And I apologize, I'm operating off of an older one that I have, but it's all I can pull up on this computer. So the school board invites and actively seeks the public's input in the matters relevant to school board governance and provides for time during its business meetings to hear from Alamo County residents and community members. During public comment, we expect respectful and on-topic comments. As authorized by ordinance of the county of Alamo, the school board will hold its meetings electronically during COVID-19, the COVID-19 pandemic. The school board is nevertheless committed to encouraging public comment despite its need to meet on a virtual basis. For this reason, there will be two ways for the public to provide comment. First, as always, written comments may be submitted to the school board clerk prior to the start of the meeting and they'll be disseminated to all of the school board members for review. And as long as the school board holds its meetings electronically, members of the public wishing to provide public comment during the school board meeting may also sign up online by 4:00 PM the day before the meeting. The clerk will email Zoom links to the speakers on the day of the meeting so that they can log into the meeting to provide comment. Before electronic public comment commences, this is long, sorry guys, the vice chair will announce the order which the speakers will comment. I'll do that after this. You'll be able to hear the meeting in progress and we'll announce when it's your turn. Speakers during the meeting or those submitting written comments should state their name, address, or their magisterial district. Simply stating Alamo County is not adequate. Further, speakers should limit their comments to those matters that are relevant to school board governance. And although the school board will not respond to comments made during the public comment period, school board members may address comments at the end of the meeting agenda under other business. With that, let me switch screens. Our first speaker will be William Hughes. He is going to be followed by Sean Johnson.
Thank you, members of the board. My name is William Hughes. I am a resident in the Whitehall District. I'm also an English teacher at Western Alamo High School where I'm part of the Student Safety Committee. I am also a parent of three rising ninth graders at Western. I'm here today to ask you to make student screenings mandatory at all of our schools. In a recent meeting, the head of my safety committee learned that we are planning to do daily employee health screenings, but not student screenings. Apparently, it's because the CDC says that we don't have to. I have four reasons why I would like you to reconsider this plan. First, the CDC's guidance. The CDC proposed guidelines in April that told schools to quote, "Implement screenings safely, respectfully, as well as in accordance with any applicable privacy laws or regulations." In May, however, under White House pressure, looser standards were issued. Standards that warn against, quote, "The consequences of excluding students from essential educational and developmental experiences." Now, I admit that that is a crucial concern. However, my point is this, that concern doesn't really apply to A C P S at the moment because we are developing a robust online curriculum that, at present, is actually going to be the typical experience for 95% of our student body. Thus, there's really no risk of exclusion. My second point addresses the CDC's argument that screenings are not 100% effective. Again, in part, I agree. However, under the circumstances, I would argue that even catching one person who would have spread the disease decreases everyone's overall risk. My third reason is that screening staff, but not screening students, is just a logical inconsistency. If we're screening employees, then why not screen students? The concerns for one population are not really that different than the other. And then my final reason is my most important. We are in the business of teaching and screening students creates a teachable moment. It not only teaches our students what symptoms to look out for, it also reminds our families to do their own self-screening at home more diligently before sending their child to school. Above all, it is a statement to our whole educational community that A C P S takes safety in mitigation seriously. Screenings will help to decrease anxiety among students and staff because they will signal that we're doing everything that we can to mitigate the dangers that we're facing as we go into our buildings. They tell everyone on a daily basis how much we care for everyone's health. That is a good lesson to teach and that's why I'm asking you to demand student screenings as part of our mitigation strategy. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hughes. Our next speaker that has signed up is Mr. Sean Johnson, but I don't believe he has joined into the meeting. And so with that, I think our public comment period concludes.
Okay, thank you very much, Mrs. Carlson. And also thanks to Mr. Hughes for the public comment. We are now ready for our spotlight on education and Mr. Alcarro, I think you are in charge of this.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. One of the most discouraging noises around my house, and maybe this happens around your houses too, is when it's quiet except for the sound of a slow water drip. The only noise that tops that is the answer on the other end of the phone when I'm trying to find a plumber who can come out to the house anytime in the next week. As bad as that seems, imagine what it must be like when you're responsible for faucets and a great many other devices, not in a home, but across 2.3 million square feet of schools. Let me give you some insight. Something like this happened at Sutherland Middle School a few years ago. And as is often the case, it occurred late at night. Some members of the current board may remember when this happened. Our maintenance team was notified by the fire department and within an hour, 14 of our professionals were on-site confronting four classrooms filled with water that flowed into the hallways. This crew worked through the night and by 7:00 AM, they had repaired the leak, cleaned and dried out the classrooms and furniture, removed the water from the hall, and had the school ready for learning. Not one minute of class time was lost. While this response certainly was not routine, the support, service, and seriousness of purpose certainly was. Our Assistant Director of Operations, Jeff Rom, leads an outstanding group of maintenance employees and custodial staff every day. And they care for those 2.3 million square feet of space, more than 600 acres of land, and 880 classrooms. They repair boilers, keep the air conditioning and heating on, troubleshoot plumbing, electrical, and mechanical problems, mow a heck of a lot of grass, monitor water treatment, septic, and sewer systems, and assist contractors who are on-site. The average years of service among our custodial staff is more than 10 years, while the average service of a maintenance tradesforeman is 13 years. For anyone tuning into the evening news on CBS 19, CBS 19 on July 31st, they saw a pretty familiar face in an unfamiliar place. It was our superintendent, Dr. Haas, manning one of the lawn mowers on Western Alamo High School's athletic field. I'm sorry that I missed that. That had to be a sight to behold. Asked by the reporter how Dr. Haas was doing negotiating all the intricate twists and turns, foreman Carl Roach said, "We could use another hand. I guess we'd hire him." That emphasis was mine. As Dr. Haas well knows, having been a high school principal at one time, few people are more important to our ability to provide a safe, healthy, clean, and fully operational learning environment than the unsung heroes who serve all of us so proudly and so well, literally, around the clock. And of course, their responsibilities and impact only has become greater and more urgent in this era of COVID-19. In honor and recognition of this invaluable work, I'd like to ask Jeff Rom to join us and to tell us a little bit more about this incredibly dedicated and talented team. Mr. Rom, it's a pleasure to have you with us. Welcome.
Great, thank you, and thank you, Board and Dr. Haas for allowing us to come on and speak a little bit about building services. But, you know, I want to go into what this department really does and just in short, brief, and the recognition that they're giving building services. It's not, it's our dedicated employees who see that our buildings are ready for the return of students, teachers, and administration from summer break, as well as the normal day throughout the school year. Our employees deserve this spotlight and we appreciate it. Yes, we have many talented tradespeople, but it is the dedication that our staff that is most impressive. Not only do they perform their respective duties throughout the year, they are prepared to do the unexpected whenever their circumstances arise, whether it be during the school day or in the middle of the night, to see that the school day resumes as normal. This could be weather-related, snowstorms, power outages, or failure from one of the many pieces of operating equipment, chillers, boilers, kitchen equipment, et cetera. Our staff understands how important it is to keep the school day operating as normal. It is those employees that made me understand how important it is when I began working for building services just over 12 years ago. I'd like to mention a few of those employees. Excuse me. Lenny Catasi, 15 years of service. John Apperson, 15 years. Jason Watts, 15 years. Norma Pace, 15 years. Ricky Howard, 17 years. J.R. Breeden, 15 years. David Vaya, 28 years. And Randall Marshall, 32 years. And the list goes on. Our people do many tasks behind the scenes and most of them, because of who they are, prefer to keep it that way. So we want to thank you, the Board, and Dr. Haas for spending the day with our general maintenance foreman Wade Roach, Carl, Russell Napper, custodial supervisor for Western Alamo High School. We thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Rom.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you, Matt.
Mr. Page, back to you.
Okay, are there any questions for Mr. Rom?
I guess I just had a question, Mr. Rom, about the preparations for people coming back into our buildings in this pandemic and how that has clearly changed but increased your workload, I would imagine.
Yes, our workload has increased incredibly, but of course, it's quite different than last summer. Last summer, we would be doing much different type of work to prepare for students coming back. So this year, it's been quite different and we've been, we are working now diligently with the principals and administration staffs to work with the number of students that will be coming back so we can set up those classrooms and be prepared for September 8th.
It's a big job. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, are there other questions?
No, but Jeff, I would just say thank you very much and thank you for sharing the work that you're doing. You guys are kind of on the front lines and I appreciate it. And if you were in person, I would shake your hand, although it's probably going to be a long time before that's allowed.
It will be.
Okay, thank you so much, Mr. Rom, for coming to us today and explaining everything about building services.
Absolutely. Thank you all.
Thank you so much.
Keep up the great work. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, our next item, announcements.
So, Mr. Page, I have some staff that have a couple of announcements, so I think Dr. Hairston would like to go first.
Thank you, Dr. Haas. I like going first. So what I'd like to do is offer to the Board and staff and any community members who are listening, just a PR push for our 2020 Virtual Equity Conference that's upcoming on August 28th. It will be held from 9:00 until 1:00. If you've not registered, you can find a link on our website under the Division Compass. And for Board members, you can also get to a link that's under the announcements of the meeting agenda. The conference this year will feature 62 micro-credential and certification educators who will share their journey of transforming into culturally responsive educators. They'll take this opportunity to share how the culturally responsive teaching professional development training transferred into their classrooms and how they validated the impact of their growth as educators on their students. This year, the chosen theme for the conference is "No Stopping Us Now." We've selected a theme song that's appropriate for the momentum and the positive energy for the support that we've gained for this CRT model. I'm just going to just share just a little bit of that theme song with you all for about a minute or so.
It's not coming through.
But I can tell by your dancing, Bernard.
I know, it must be good.
So-
He didn't say he was going to actually share the music, I think.
I know that was going to be super cool.
Right, I know, I know.
Ober, maybe you can just sing us a refrain of something.
All right.
So I'm sorry that the sound didn't come through and I will not try to sing it for you all because that will be a big joke. But, so, what, from that theme song, our presenters will be sharing why they are on a move to close achievement gaps, how they got in the groove to be better teachers, and why there is no stopping them now. You will see how they have polished up their acts as culturally responsive educators to successfully reach to teach all students. So Board members and staff members who are listening to this, this conference will give you an opportunity for a firsthand experience as to why culturally responsive teaching is the best practice for closing achievement gaps in Alamo County Public Schools. So we hope to see you at the conference on August 28th. Thank you for listening.
Dr. Hairston, was it Starship?
No, no. McFadden and Whiteheads ain't no stopping us now.
Right, okay.
Thank you, Dr. Hairston.
Thank you so much, Dr. Hairston.
You're so welcome.
Dr. Haas?
We have just one other announcement and that's from Dr. Christine Diggs.
Thank you, Dr. Haas. Good evening. I'd like to actually introduce Lorenzo Dickerson, who has an announcement to share about our new website.
So, good evening, everyone. I'm Lorenzo Dickerson, web content, social media specialist. A C P S has now launched our new website. This has been a collaboration for about a year now between the Communication Department and the Technology Department. And our steering committee has been working diligently to bring this to life for a while. We've based our design and functionality on feedback from the community, analytics, as well as survey results. The purpose for this new website is for people to be able to more easily find information, to give us a more modern look, as well as to be ADA compliant. We know that 6.8 million, we've gotten 6.8 million unique visitors to our site over the last year and about 73% of those have been new visitors. So we've heard the community, we understand the importance of our site and our site for our overall communication. So this is why we've created this new site and this site will be community-focused. Thank you.
Thank you, Lorenzo.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dickerson. Appreciate it. It's good to see you.
Could I ask, could I ask a question, either Christine or Lorenzo? Is it necessary to have the school board link subsumed under division? Because if people don't know where to look, it's sort of hard to get there and we are independent. Just a thought.
It's actually a good point because I had a tough time finding it to get the agenda earlier.
Yeah.
I think we should, I think we should be a separate line above division.
We could definitely work on that and bring that to our steering committee.
Picture of Grant.
Lorenzo, 6.8 million uniques?
Wow.
That's an incredible number. Wow.
Yeah. Definitely, yeah. Our website is a very important piece to our communication. And like I said, 73% of those visits were from first-time users of our site.
Wow.
That's incredible. That's incredible. And I love the look. I haven't spent enough time, you know, going into the, into all the details, but I sure love the look of it. It seems so much easier to use.
Yes, for sure.
To you and to Dr. Diggs.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much, Lorenzo and Dr. Diggs. Any other comments related to our announcements? Okay, if not, moving right along to the school superintendent, school board superintendent business.
We do not have anything other than what's on the agenda.
All right.
I have an update, Chairman Page.
All right.
I just wanted to update the Board on the Communications Committee meeting that Dr. Acuff and I had with staff after the last meeting to talk about public comment during these COVID meetings. Through some changes in procedure, we'll be closing our public comment signup at 2:00 PM the day of the meeting instead of the day before. And we hope that this allows for more members of the public to comment. And we'll be assessing how well it works in the next, gosh, I'm going to say next couple of months, but honestly, we don't know.
For the duration.
Yes. I wrote that and then I got sad right when I said it. The other thing that we discussed were the town halls for reopening, which obviously have already happened. And, you know, with hopes that there can be more on either topic-related or just general. So that is our update. Kate, if you have any additions?
No, I think we were going to add some more text in the link to making public comment to, so people understood better how to do it.
It would be nice if that was on the front page of the school board. All right, you know, on the, it would be nice if you went to the A C P S website and there was a public comment. And it would also be nice if there was a, write a note to the school board. So-
Would that be right below my picture?
Under Graham's picture with his home phone number.
Yes, write a note to Graham.
All right, so-
I think that's great.
Okay, thank you very much for that update, Communications Committee, and we are really pleased with the work that you are doing. Okay, thank you very much for that update, communications committee, and we are really pleased with the work that you are doing. So thanks so very, very much. The town halls and also for the, um, possible changes in, uh, the, um, public comments. So thank you so much for both things. If there is no other school board or superintendent business, we are ready to move into the school division business. Our first item, the COVID-19 status update by Dr. Patrick McLaughlin.
Evening, board members. I'm Pat McLaughlin, Chief of Strategic Planning. And with me tonight are Chris Gilman, our Coordinator of Research, and Eileen Gomez, who leads our school nurse team. As you recall, our return to school plan outlined multiple factors that we'll use to determine when we move from one stage to another as we weather, as we weather the COVID crisis. These include such factors as CDC and Health Department guidance, the status of local and state ordinances related to the crisis. And our ability to implement our instructional and health plans. The board has asked for regular updates in regard to one of these factors, the current COVID-19 conditions in the region. In particular, our community transmission and testing positivity rates. We're receiving regular updates on these statistics from the Virginia Department of Health and plan to update the board tonight and at future meetings. It's important to note that the statistics and trend data that we bring you tonight are one piece of the puzzle. It can be used as we make determinations about moving forward or back with our return to school stages. We're not setting targets that would dictate the board move to a different stage and recommend that the board continue to look at all of the factors collectively as those decisions are made. The data we provide tonight is directly from the VDH and we're continuing to determine if other metrics should be included to make the most informed decisions. We receive data updates weekly and have a standing weekly update on the agenda to the superintendent's cabinet in addition to our standing board updates. And at this time, I'll turn things over to Eileen Gomez to take you through the latest statistics. Eileen?
I was having some technical difficulties. Thank you, Dr. McLaughlin. Um, thank you, board, for coming to this meeting tonight and hear this. Talk about our case incidence data. As Patrick was saying, the Virginia Department of Health monitors pandemic data. And provides a weekly update of metrics to gauge community transmission. Two of the data points used to measure local community transmission are burden, which is defined as case incidents per 100,000. And the testing positivity rate, which is defined as the percent of reported COVID tests that yield positive results. Could, there we am, and you, you, the, I'll show you, in this first graph that came directly from the Virginia Department of Health, they broke. This into zones. They have a low zone, a medium zone and a high zone. And the goal is of course to go down to zero, but the interim goal is to get into the low zone. The first measure here that we have is the Alamo County incident rate, and this is as of the 11th of August. You can see this number in orange on the left is the case incident rate per 100,000, which is 7.6 new cases. Per 100,000 people per day shown as a seven day floating average, which is in the moderate zone on this chart, as you can see. On the far right is the directionality or trend of the way this has, this data has been going over time. And you can see that it's been fluctuating in the moderate zone, but this number reflects a two-day downward directionality. Here we have the Alamo County percent positivity. That's the test data. You can see the yellow is showing that we had 4.2% positivity. And I just heard Dr. Fauci say that the reason that we even report this is because it's very predictive of later, uh, surges. So luckily, we're down below the, uh, the demarcation, which you can hardly see in this graph, but down below five at 4.2%. That also is a seven day floating average. And it's, we're down here. The directionality actually has been up, but just slightly up in the last three days. But we're still below the, um, demarcation for putting us in the low zone there. We also have the Charlottesville data because of course the two Charlottesville and Almar so intermingled that this will actually have some impact on us as well. You can see for them, the 12.5, 12.5 cases per 100,000 puts them into this higher zone here. But they have been on a downward directionality and actually we can probably even call this a trend over the last 16 days. They've been heading down, although they're still in the higher zone above 10. Then for the city of Charlottesville, the percent positivity as of the 11th was 5.6%, which, as I said, you can't really see it so well here, but it's a little bit above the line that separates medium, moderate from low. But it's going in the right direction because the directionality has been downward for the last 12 days. So we hope this is the, uh, the first of a series of data presentations we'll do. And we'll have more specific, uh, numbers to match with actual dates as we go along collecting this data.
Yeah, thanks, Eileen. And, um, and like Eileen said, we are, uh, this is the first of our reports to the board. We plan on bringing an update to you at each of your meetings for the foreseeable future. Uh, we're also getting weekly updates in our cabinet meetings and we would be happy to try to answer any questions or receive any comments that you have about the information we presented tonight.
I have a suggestion for, since this is the first one for a future presentation, could we get that, uh, information aligned with the graph that Rosalyn showed? You know, so instead of, um, Eileen, instead of. A slide for each, if I can, you know, the, do y'all remember the one I'm talking about where it was like check, green, red? I think would be helped to, helpful to have that condensed.
Okay.
It would also be helpful if, if you could do it. I don't know that you can, but if you can, uh, to have the dates of those points. I'd like to, yeah, I'd like to see where the peaks were.
Yes, we'll try to get that.
Okay, any other questions?
I'm also a little bit unclear. Is there Alamo County data in there? Does the Charlottesville City, does that include the Alamo County data?
The, the first two slides were Alamo County data. We had a positivity rate and, uh, incidence rate for them. And then the second two were Charlottesville City. What we don't have is a, um, is a combined metric, uh, for them. The Health Department, uh, separates those out individually.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, other comments?
I, I have a question for Eileen. It's outside this data, but one of our public commenters. Uh, queried about, uh, routine screening of students. And I guess I was wondering what your take on that is. I mean, I know that we have, you know, one nurse per school. Uh, that would be an extraordinary, I mean, it would take an hour at least to get all the kids in, but. Just wanting some of your thoughts on that.
Well, the logistics of that, especially at the larger schools, do seem kind of hard to, to comprehend how that could happen. Uh, the other. Reservation I have about that is asking children these screening questions might not yield us the same kind of effect as it would be asking adults. You know, with, with children, I think you tend to have more maybe minimizers and maximizers. And I think especially with the young children, that could take quite a long time if we're asking them those questions. The temperature checks, however, can go really quickly. So if we were to do a temperature screening, I, I think we could, we could achieve that when we had everybody back in, in person. Yeah, I just, I, I don't know about the logistics of getting all the students in through a screening process.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions?
I guess, in, um, oh, I have one question. In regards to that then, um, could we start with the smaller groups since we have fewer students in now?
That's what I was thinking. We could do that as a pilot to see how that goes. Yes.
We've been working on a, a protocol for, as, uh, people come into the school where they'll do a temperature check. And also, uh, this is for the adults coming in, but because we'll have small numbers of students, we ought to be able to. Develop a protocol for temperature checks for children as well. I think that was a really good suggestion that, uh, Mr. Hughes made. And that, um, to the extent that we can, it, it certainly makes sense to attempt. To, uh, screen and look for symptoms in, in children, just like, just like the adults. So, um, this, starting out in stage two does give us a chance to tackle that on a smaller scale.
Okay, thank you, uh, Dr. McLaughlin and Ms. Gomez for that excellent report. Moving to our next, next division business, superintendent's recommend, recommendation regarding the renaming of Sutherland.
Thank you, Mr. Page. At this time, I'm going to turn things over to, uh, Jasmine, Ms. Jasmine Fernandez to provide, uh, background on my recommendation. Thank you, Ms. Fernandez.
Good evening, everyone. As Dr. Haas mentioned, my name is Ms. Fernandez. I currently serve as the, uh, project advisor, but my role on the committee was serving as the committee leader. This evening, I will be talking about the process and the activities that the Sutherland Advisory Committee engaged in. And Principal Wood will be talking about the name recommendation and what went into that decision. As a reminder, in 2018, you all tasked, uh, Dr. Haas in the school division with reviewing the names of all of the schools in the division named after an individual. So excluding Mountain View that just participated in the process and Sutherland, there are 12 other remaining schools that would need to undergo this process. As you are very much aware, you approved the name for Mountain View in January 23rd. And the name went into effective on July 1st. I just want to take a moment to acknowledge that. When the Sutherland name is approved, that name won't go into effect until July 1st of next summer. And later on in the presentation, I will explain further as to why that is. A reminder of the purpose of this process. In part, it's to really allow an opportunity for the school communities to reflect on the history of the school name. And this is also an opportunity, as Dr. Haas talks a lot about, just in terms of reimagining, what do we want our school community to look like in the future? How are we ensuring that we are aligning our name to those goals, to those aspirations? And obviously ensuring that it's aligned with our division's values. Accessibility is a key component of this process. We've talked a lot about the need to continue to, um, amplify opportunities to be, to, to gather input. And so that includes whether through a community survey, the community meetings, ensuring that we have interpretation services, recordings, press releases. And I just wanted to note with the new website, um, our webpage is currently in the process of transferring over. And so that will be up and running if it's not already. Um, and on that webpage, we have all of the access to all of our survey results as well as our press releases. And we will continue to update the webpage as we continue to go with the other schools along, along the way. Then we have the inclusion of all voices. And as you know, in the name, in the naming policy, it was really important that we included representation from school staff, from parents. Um, but also ensuring that we are uplifting student voice. If you are a high school, you're required to have a student as part of the process. I'm going to talk about this in a second, but for Sutherland, we made an intentional choice to have an eighth grader serve on the advisory committee. And we also had additional opportunities for student outreach. And so that's a big part of this process and making sure that we are hearing from the, the community. And that also includes community members who may not have children who attend that particular school, but still would like to be a, a part of this process. This is just a quick reminder of the different components of the procedure. So we start off with the advisory committee notifying the relatives. I just want to note that we have been in contact with, um, Sutherland's great niece who reached out and then we've been in communication. And then having meetings, obviously coming to you all with the final recommendation, which is where we are this evening. For those who are tuning in, um, our, our families, um, and just the greater public, just wanted to clarify that the reason why we chose to. Proceed with Sutherland is because Sutherland was the contemporary of, um, Paul Kale. And since they served during the same time, we thought that it would make sense to have, um, Sutherland participate next in this process. So, the Sutherland Advisory Committee. First, I just want to take a second to acknowledge all of the work and thoughtfulness that went into this process. Our committee was incredibly energetic. And, um, even throughout COVID, they were very flexible with their time. So I just wanted to take a moment to publicly acknowledge their, their hard work. In terms of the makeup of our committee, it included myself, Principal Wood, a teacher, school counselor and a librarian. We had two community members who don't have children who, um, who attend Sutherland, but have been very connected to the school and in the neighborhood. And then we had parents, three parents who, um, have children who attend Sutherland. And then we also were intentional about having three parents who are. Who have children who currently attend those feeder schools. And then students, as I mentioned, we had a eighth grader who joined our advisory committee. Unfortunately with COVID, um, he had to step down halfway through to prioritize his schoolwork, but we were super excited that we were able to have him from the beginning. And I'm going to turn it over to Principal Wood, who's going to talk just briefly about the student informational sessions.
Thank you, Ms. Fernandez. Um, we were able before the school shut down with COVID to host, um, both an informational session and a feedback session by grade level. So I was able to meet with two groups of students, um, at different times. Uh, the informational session, we had about 60 students attend in total. Out of those 60 students, we had about 30 return to provide feedback to the, to the committee. Um, overwhelmingly, the trend of feedback that we received from the students was to make the name as, as inclusive as possible. I was able to share that with the committee before we, uh, entered into the, the survey phase.
Thank you. So in terms of the process, we are required per the policy to circulate two surveys. As you can see here, um, the numbers weren't as high as we would have liked the first go around. Um, and then during the second, we were really impressed that we were able to get more, um, input from the community. Given the timeline, we circulated our, our second, um, survey around April. So just given the circumstances, we were really grateful to have received more input. But it was during our second community meeting where we had a student, a PTO member and a teacher speak. And there was a consensus that they felt they didn't have enough information on, um, upfront to make an informed decision. They felt that it would be helpful to have more information about Sutherland, um, in his past. And so based off of that feedback, we created a third survey. And that third survey had a link to the research that we gathered about Sutherland. And as you can see, we had the highest responded rate for that third survey. We were super excited. And part of it was also that the highest, um, group that completed the survey was our students. Principal, would you mind talking a little bit about what we did, um, around the third survey to get student input?
Sure, we, um, benefited from the fact that, that we were able to allow students to come back and clean out their lockers, um, at the end of June. And this was when we had decided to, to go ahead and send out another survey. So as, we had over 300 students sign up to come and clean out their lockers. And as they went through the locker cleanup process, we created paper ballots and students voted as they were exiting the building on the, on the name. Um, which was, you know, a benefit because we had always planned to have students vote at school. And so it was nice that we were able to incorporate that into the process. Under the circumstances.
Thank you. I also want to acknowledge that we were also intentional about getting feedback from the other parents, um, who attend the feeder schools. So we circulated the survey as well through, um, Blackboard Connect to make sure that incoming parents had an opportunity to weigh in. So in terms of timeline, I alluded to this earlier. There are a lot of different items that, um, have to be completed on the backend in order for a name to officially move. Obviously you all voting and approving the name, but then there are operationally different tasks that need to happen. So just a quick example would be updating the signage, making sure that we, um, have updated, um, you know, um. Like anything administratively, so whether that being updated letterheads, updating the school webpage. And so with that, um, it. And so with that, it, if one approved, the new name for Sutherland won't go into effect until this upcoming summer. Or next summer, July 1st of 2021. And with that, I'm going to turn it back over to Principal Wood, who's going to walk us through the name recommendation.
Thank you, Ms. Fernandez. I would just like to reiterate my appreciation for the committee. As Ms. Fernandez already said, the committee was really dedicated to honoring our community voice and our students' voices. Based on their dedication to that, the recommendation that we would like to make to Dr. Ha's is that the school's name be changed to Lakeside. Lakeside was both the, the parent and the student number one choice.
And at this point, we'll open it up for any questions that you may have.
Questions from the board? It sounds as though this was a very thorough, very well thought out and very well executed plan and strategy and process. Thank you to everybody involved, Jasmine, to Megan and, and to all the committee members.
I had just a quick question about the survey. So was the survey brought up to students? So was the survey asking if they wanted the name to be changed? Or just what options like Lakeside, like what options they wanted Sutherland to be named?
That's a great question, Melanie. So the, the process is a little different this time around compared to when we did it with Mountain View. So from the beginning, what we did was we included Sutherland as a name that could be a part of the pool. And then we narrowed it down to 10 names. And then from 10 names, we narrowed it down to three names. And as Principal Wood mentioned, for Lakeside, it was the student's number one choice. And so we wanted to honor student voice and that's why we prioritize Lakeside. So they had, to answer your question, they had the option of selecting an existing name. And then along the way, they had the option to weigh in on the final name.
I had a question about the process, since this is the first time we're going through it with the policy. Do you have any feedback or, or things that we should be looking at that need to be changed? Or do you think along that line?
Absolutely. So, you know, we're, we're learning as we go. And it was definitely for us really important feedback that we heard from the community about sharing research beforehand. So we didn't share a link to Sutherland's past until that third survey. And many of the feedback that we received from parents, as well as just emails from different community members was they would have liked to have that information beforehand, before even taking that first survey.
I guess I just have a, thank you for all the work on this. And I, I think the name Lakeside is great. Just broadly in terms of our policy. And what I thought we had perhaps learned from the Kale Mountain View example was that I thought broadly, the school board wanted to look at all the named schools named for individuals and generally find substitutions for those names because a name, any individual shouldn't necessarily have a building named after themselves in perpetuity. One of the things that I know that was quite hurtful for the Kale family who wrote gazillions of letters to us was essentially it was sort of set up as an indictment of Mr. Kale. And that's not, and so I thought we were, I had hoped we were going to get away from doing a forensic, you know, deep dive into everybody's past and, and therefore that's a justification for change of the name. Rather than a preference for looking at school names, just to see broadly, I guess, I guess. Well. I guess the issue though of aligning the names with the, the goals of the school division sort of undermines my argument, but I'm not a hundred percent comfortable with that aspect of this process.
Kate, I, just so that you, you gain some solidarity, I would agree. I, I also in some ways feel uncomfortable sending out biographical information. I'm presuming it's generally negative is what we're taking issue with when we send those things out. And I, Kate, you said it much more eloquently than I did. I would just say that I agree with what you said.
Well, in line with our current policies and our policy of wanting to make sure that all names reflect the goals and the expectations that we have now. I think in some cases, we need to know that information. And well, I think that would be enough to say right now, but I think it's sometimes we do need to know that information. Because that might be a really deciding factor in some cases to know what, how this person may not reflect what we now believe as a county. And what we would expect our school system to be showing to our students and to our community.
Simply because our history is our history. Yeah. If we just sort of like, if, if we say, hey, look, we're going to rename it, but we're not going to say why. We're not giving the, the acknowledgement of why. I mean, there is, there is a why that certain people should not be the names of schools. And if we just sort of rename it and don't acknowledge for reason, it seems like it just, I think that's a mistake. I think we should own, we should own who we are. I, that, it's just my opinion. I just, I, I know it's painful to revisit history, but pain can be a healthy thing.
And Dave, that's, that is convincing. So thank you for bringing that up. I guess what comes to mind is I remember when the Kale thing happened. And I think it became a little bit of a media storm that that family didn't necessarily deserve. Because it's, you know, he, he was dead and it's his family that's having to live through all this. And I remember someone coming up to me and said, if you want to rename this one, that's fine, do it. Please just take the name off. I would rather you just take it and don't even offer it because I don't need. So I don't know. I don't have the answer. I respect what you say, Dave. I also want to respect that it's, we're not like fact finder biographers who are going to be able to find out all the information adequately. And that's not really our role when we're researching like these local people. But maybe it's a future conversation because I need to think about it.
Yeah. But I think the committee did do a good job in researching information, information related to Mr. Sutherland. And so again, like Dave is saying, I think that we even need to make sure that we always are cognizant of all of the facts that might be leading to a name change, even though it may not be pleasant at all times. Still to have those facts known would be something that we have to make sure we do have available. Are there any other questions?
I have one last question.
Okay.
Are there any like statistics or survey responses for students or parents who don't want a name change?
I mean, we, we definitely had some, are you asking generally speaking, like about the changing, participating in the name process in general?
Or I guess specific to Sutherland.
We. Go ahead.
Oh no, just like, I don't know, like any numbers or survey responses?
Yeah, we have the survey results on the webpage for all three for the first go around. We definitely did have some people who wanted to keep it Sutherland. But there was a general consensus that if the name was changed, they wanted to prioritize geography. And we saw those results during the first survey. And then when we started narrowing it down, we saw, you know, Rorona was one of them, Lakeside was one of them. We thought that there was a preference even in the names that were recommended, that they were focused around geography.
Thank you.
I also had one other question. And also thank you very much for all the thoughtful work. I really appreciate it. And this is to that point also. Was there a number that you were looking for in terms of survey results or a certain kind of like mix between community and student? Or like what made you, what was the real deciding factor of like, okay, well, let's put out a third one?
Yeah, it's a great question. If I'm being transparent and Principal Wood, please feel free to jump in. We, from the beginning, said one of our values when we had our first meeting. We said, what will make this process successful? What are the values that we want to prioritize? In, in our, as our, our roles as committee members. And everyone had to go around and, and give one value. And there was a consensus that we wanted to honor and center student voice. And so we always brought it back to that. We would look at our, when we were narrowing the survey, or sorry, the names. We would look at which names that students select. When we were looking at the final survey results, majority of the students, it was their number one choice was Lakeside. And so to answer your question, student voice is definitely something that we prioritize. And as well as we wanted to make sure that we were having, I guess you could say like a, a well-balanced responded groups. And so thinking about parents, employees, community members, but we definitely did center student voice.
So, Mr. Page, I just want to, as, as we discussed in the rehearsal that we had this week, I just want to make it official that this is my recommendation as a superintendent to change Sutherland Middle School's name to Lakeside Middle School. I really want to thank Jasmine and Megan, all of the committee members. I had the opportunity to meet with the committee twice, to give them their charge and have conversations with them. And I was really impressed with the composition of the committee and also their dedication to this task. They took it very seriously. And in the end, it, it is the committee's decision and recommendation. And it needs to be unanimous to move forward. So while we do surveys, that's just a, a gauge and it helps us kind of narrow down the decision-making process for the committee. I really appreciate the comments from board members because it reminds me that we are working to strike a balance between what Ms. Carlson mentioned as, you know, we, we want to be really careful to not turn the process into a referendum about an individual who lived during their own time. And, and oftentimes none of us know personally or have ever gotten to know that person. Balancing that between doing that. But also as, as Dave pointed out, and that really there is a, a reason for why we are doing this work to begin with. And it really is around reframing the historical narrative. That part of our history as Alamo County is to hold up individuals who in many ways held back the school system and many community members within the school system that didn't get to be part of the overall educational program in a way that was, that was, that was equal and, and fair. And so we, we do want to balance that. You know, we talk about reframing the historical narrative with our students and our history curriculum. And it's also, I think, important to reframe it through how we decide how we're going to name our, name our facilities. So it is, it is a tough balance. And in going back and revising the policy, we, we swung in the complete opposite direction from the policy that we had used the first time. Because the first time we did it, it really was a referendum. And it, and you could understand why the Kale family and also many residents of Alamo County were, were quite upset at the first decision being, should we rename the school? But then in, in in looking at the policy and revising it, we moved to a process where we felt that that wouldn't be necessary. And then we had conversations among committee members because they received feedback from the Sutherland Committee that they really would have liked to know more about the person for whom the school is named to help them make the decision. The good news is, is that we were able to provide that and it did not, and so far as I can tell, and I know things can change tomorrow, but so far I, I don't feel that this turned into the same kind of process where the person was then dragged out through, through the media. There, we, we've simply stated very, I, I think in a way that substantiates the need for change, but at the same time doesn't go too far, I hope. But I really appreciate all the comments from the board. Before we move on to one of the next schools that we look at, we're going to take those under advisement and continue to try to refine the process so that the overall purpose of reframing the historical narrative can be maintained while we still are sensitive to members of our, to all the members of our, our community. So thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Ha, Ms. Fernandez and Ms. Wood for your outstanding work in coming up with the recommendation. This is the first time, so tonight, this is for information only. If there are no objections, we can put this on the consent, the renaming of the school onto the consent agenda for our August 27th meeting. So. A consent item on the 27th meeting minutes.
Sounds good.
Okay. Any other questions related to this? All right. Thanks again to that committee for doing such an outstanding job. All right, our third item in the division business, the strategic plan update, Dr. McLaughlin.
So good evening again, board members. I'm Pat McLaughlin, Chief of Strategic Planning. And I'm here tonight to give you a brief update on the coming work to develop our portrait of an Alamo graduate and our new Alamo County Public Schools strategic plan. As you may recall, we've partnered with Patel for Kids and Ed Leader 21 to develop our new plan. The plan development consists of three distinct phases. The creation of a portrait of a graduate, the completion of a division needs assessment. And finally, the development and adoption of a multi-year strategic plan for the school division. Our first step in this process has been the formation of our design team. This team will meet five times beginning next month to create a portrait of a graduate. Our strategic plan leadership team, which consists of Jamie Gellner, Jasmine Fernandez and Helen Dunn, has done incredible community outreach to recruit staff, students and community members to support this work. Currently, we have commitments from 113 individuals to be a part of this process. The team has been striving to create a diverse cadre of voices to inform the process. And preliminary numbers indicate that we've achieved that goal. We're also striving for strong student voice in the process and are happy to report that we have 20 middle and high school students who will be a part of our team. The design team will begin meeting on September 3rd and will wrap up their work on October 29th. All of our meetings will be virtual. And as we discussed in our work session, we welcome up to two school board members to attend each session. I'll be asking Jennifer Johnston, Johnston to reach out to the board in the near future to help with scheduling for these meetings. We anticipate the stage one work being complete at the end of October and hope to bring the board a presentation of our portrait of a graduate in November or December. So I'm excited to get this work started and I'd be happy to take any questions or comments that you may have.
Questions? The only thing I noticed, you know, the committee, I really liked the diversity, but I noticed that it was what 68% or 62% female, 38% male. Any explanation of that?
We, we did, we did see that. You know, that's something that, that kind of stood out to us as well. I don't know that I've got an explanation for it, other than we, we sort of live in a, in a female dominated profession. And when we look for staff members, we're, we're oftentimes more heavily weighted with, with women than with men on that end.
To that end, also, was there an effort to align it to representation of our student body? In terms of racial demographics?
Yes, that was one of our goals. And while it's not perfect, it's, it's close. And one thing I'll also say about these numbers is that we've put some assumptions, particularly into the community members about their demographics. We've got an anonymous survey out to them now where we're asking specific questions about those demographics. So if anything shifts dramatically with their reported demographics, instead of the, you know, a lot of the folks that we've, that we've tapped are folks that, that somebody on the design team is, or the leadership team is known. So we're going to, we can report back on that once we have the survey results in by next week, I hope.
Any other comments or questions for Dr. McLaughlin's work? Okay. Thank you so much for that update and we'll be looking forward to, uh, in future presentations.
Thank you.
We're now scheduled for a break. So according to the computer, the time is 7:40. We'll reconvene at 7:50 Eastern Daylight Time. So we'll take a 10-minute break. Thank you.
Bye, Melanie.
Okay. It is now 7:50 and time to resume our meeting. We will now move to our professional learning update. Ms. Jennifer Sublet.
Good evening. Thank you. I'm Jennifer Sublet. I'm the Director of Professional Learning here in Alamo County. And it's my pleasure to give you an update of a very busy summer that we've had in professional learning. So usually I would have a PowerPoint with slides of many of our teachers collaborating in our instructional spaces and working together. Just wanted to give you a quick sense of what a virtual summer professional learning experience looks like. This is a day when we had several workshops going. The exciting piece though, is that we had 100% of our program move pivot to a virtual environment. We were able to maintain and even add to our professional learning menu for the summer. And a real focus for us was realizing that while we are so grateful for the energy that was put into our spring and the work that was done by learning tech integrators, instructional coaches and all of our teachers to do what we could in such an incredibly difficult time. We also knew that we needed to be prepared for whatever this fall would bring. So this summer has been a time for us to strategically think about the lessons we learned from the spring, the research around best practices for hybrid or virtual learning, and to develop a comprehensive professional learning plan that would help us be able to meet the needs of the coming school year. So we started with our required sessions. All ACPS teachers, elementary and secondary, have engaged in a series of asynchronous virtual professional learning sessions. For our K5 educators, we focused here on CSO. And a quick reminder, CSO was a new tool for many of our educators in the spring when we suddenly went to a full adoption of it. In addition, CSO was a program originally designed to be a student portfolio and family engagement tool. It was not a conference of learning management system. We did a great job of piecing together what we could, but we've learned a lot about how to use CSO. We've harnessed the experts within our division and we've been working with CSO who themselves have been bringing on more features in order to be a more robust program to meet the needs of the nation right now. So our teachers were able to choose from a menu that helped give them the foundation tools of how to use the program. A focus on family engagement and building partnerships because we know, especially for our K5 learners, that connection to home is so important. Tools for effective feedback, so families would know exactly where their students were and students would know where they were in terms of working towards their learning targets. Organizing instruction, again, based on feedback from families, knowing that that became a challenge for us this spring. And then also equity tools. We wanted to make sure that teachers knew that they could have tools to help them track access and achievement by all of their students in order to maintain our priorities and to maintain our focus on success for all students. For our secondary teachers, a quick reminder that we were in the first year of our implementation of Schoology. Again, there we had a three-year strategic plan for bringing Schoology on, focused on consistent use and use that would build teachers and their competence and competence in how to use the program. That changed in spring as we found that we were beginning to use it not only at a greater rate, but also with greater levels of complexity. So the summer was a time for us to really think about what were the best practices, design elements and instructional focus for use of Schoology. Schoology is a robust learning management system as a great deal of capabilities. It also allows us to partner with other tools such as our K-12 Google Suite, but it's a more complex tool. So we focused our professional learning modules here to make sure that teachers first got to experience and explore exemplar units to see how instruction could be laid out clearly for students, how they could have a variety of interactive synchronous and asynchronous learning experience for students and that they could actually see an exemplar unit and experience it as a student and then learn how to build it as a teacher. We were careful to make sure that we had exemplar units in all content areas. We did not want to leave it to chance that a social studies teacher might have to look at an English unit and then translate how to make that work within their own history or government class. The second part of the secondary professional development was what I like to call taking apart the Legos. What were the different tools, the individual tools and techniques that were used to build those units? Again, we're asking our teachers to become quite proficient, but we have found that rather than making sure they can use 20 tools, pick six really effective tools, get very comfortable with them, use them well, help students learn how to use them well. So we emphasized that within the second module of the PD. And then our third module, we wanted to pull back up to quality learning and instruction. One of the guiding principles for professional development this summer has been that we want to maintain our focus on what quality teaching and learning are and how we then translate that to a virtual environment. So we don't want to lose any ground on the work that we're doing to guarantee those rich experiences for our students. In addition to that required PD that all of our teachers are working through, we've had a robust menu of optional sessions. And we've had incredible participation. And actually, this is my third summer working with our professional development menu. And I really am seeing higher levels of participation. I think in part from the urgency that teachers know we're preparing for a challenging fall, but also because there's some flexibility in virtual professional development. And I would actually, um, expect that some of what we have been able to put together this summer will become a remaining permanent part of our professional development suite. Teachers have been very receptive and actually much more able to attend and, and be a part of our professional development. So we had over 450 teachers attend these workshops. You'll see a focus here, social emotional learning. Many of our teachers want to make sure that they feel capable of developing close relationships with their students and strong classroom communities, even in a virtual learning environment. That I think will be very important for our families as well as our students and definitely speaks to the heart of the teaching, uh, soul that we have within our, our teaching, uh, cadre. We also had a focus on collaboration and PLC work. We know that that is going to be really important, that our teachers will have to collaborate, share, lean on each other. They'll be more effective and they'll, they'll, they'll be feeling more competent and competent as they move into the year. And finally, we wanted to make sure we created a network of support for technology, ongoing technology learning throughout the year. So CSO and Schoology Champions strategically identified by administrators in each of our buildings. Our teachers who took a deeper dive into those two programs learned even more intermediate tools and now will be available as resources within their buildings for each of their, their colleagues. One of the things I found interesting, it's always great in summer PD, I get to see teachers from around the division. It's a wonderful energetic time and there's always the casual, hey, thanks Jen, that was great. We really appreciated it. This summer I got unsolicited feedback from teachers who went out of their way to email. Uh, we maintained an email summer PD for anybody who needed help. It helped us running, um, with several of us manning that as, as much as we could. Didn't have a lot of issues, but it was a great way for teachers to know they had support. Even as people would ask a question, they would often tag in, by the way, this is great. This is exactly what I needed. So it was really great to be able to see that teachers recognize the alignment of the professional development we had this summer to the challenges that we know we're going to face this fall. Uh, for me, that is always an indicator of, of alignment on our program. We, of course, will also have a more formal process of looking at our exit tickets, our feedback forms, and we'll seek information from teachers about what next. Finally, I just wanted to bring up the best part of summer professional development, which every year is our new teacher academy. This week we welcomed our new teachers here. They were kind enough. This is one screen of the four, uh, when we were all together waving and saying hello to you. We had a great two days. We kick off with two division level days and then the last two days of the week there in their buildings. Again, while we are preparing for a challenging fall, we wanted to also make sure that this was an induction program for bringing these educators into our division for their career. This is not simply getting ready for 2020, 2021. So we did maintain our focus on our ethos as a division, our mission, our vision, our equity work, helping them understand what it means to be an educator in Alamo County. And then we gave them tools that we did make sure allow them to meet that ethos within this fall that's coming up. So focusing on our technology tools, our development, development of clear learning targets for students, designing learning environments and again, building learning communities. So we've had a busy summer. It's been a great summer. It's been wonderful to see our teachers dig in, take a breath and then like get ready for the coming year. And now we're beginning to build our plans out for 2021. I think it's important to remember that while many of us are continuing to virtually connect, we do have a strong network of support for our teachers, our instructional coaches, our learning, learning tech integrators and our school-based champions will be very important for that tech integration piece as we move forward. We will also have division-level professional learning communities that allow for a more formal structure of collaborating and sharing across the division. We think that's going to really help. We saw high degrees of variance and we know that that's something that is frustrating for families. We'll also continue to support those new educators that you just saw an image of with our novice teacher network and ongoing induction for teachers new to ACPS, especially having met them virtually, although we feel like they are part of the fold now and, and a part of our own. It will be important. It will be important, I think, for them to feel connected and to have a very focused induction program this year. And we'll continue to have ongoing sessions for all teachers. Teacher wellness, because we know that the stress and the weight of what we are all facing and the challenges of what is ahead weigh on teachers, and they tend to take everything on their shoulders, both the instructional piece and the child piece. Increasingly, look at accessibility tools. Ongoing focus on Schoology and CSO and combining those with accessibility for our students with learning needs, as well students with access, and building classroom community and SEO. Those learning partnerships, the culture responsive teaching, partnering with our equity specialists and partnering with responsive classroom and developmental designs to make sure we're attending to the whole program. I think one of the areas of emphasis for us is that while we are in a new learning environment, we want to stay true to what we believe about teaching and learning. We want to make sure our teachers have the tools that they need, but also the philosophical underpinnings that help bring and take those tools and make them a successful learning environment for all of our students. And I'm open to questions or?
Thank you, Ms. Sublet. Any questions related to our professional development?
Well, I have one. I just was curious about the, on the, I think it was maybe the first slide, there were, there was a lot of information, but there was a class in the Equity Audit Tools to Plan for Monitoring Student Progress, and I just want to know more about that.
Sure. So in Equity Audit, we have an introduction and a deep dive. And it allows teachers to, if we think about our own equity dashboard and how is it the vision we look at metrics? That's a great 30,000 view piece. But Equity Audit within a classroom, it gives a teacher a chance to do their own action research and to carefully look at the demographics and the performance of their students and then watch it very carefully. That allows them to make instructional adjustments. It can allow them to make resource adjustments, and they can track anything from peer, it can be your traditional academic data, but also think about a teacher in a classroom being able to track peer-to-peer interactions, family interactions. Am I calling home? For example, with the CRT lens, am I calling home families that may have a different cultural context than my own? How do I hold myself accountable to my own measures within a locus of control that I have? So we find the Equity Audit a great way for teachers to be able to take the larger focus on equity within our division and translate it into a very actionable space within their own classroom.
And is that a type of PD that has been available before?
It has been. It is one that we introduced last summer, Equity Audit as well as making connections. And we wanted to be able to do some ongoing work where a teacher can have their focus and then work with our equity specialist to kind of process through. It's very, it's a reflective type of process for a teacher. They learn a lot about their own planning and attending to and meeting the needs of all of their students.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Any other questions from board members?
Yes, I got one. We get a lot of, well, I get a lot of questions about what kind of professional development our teachers are getting to be prepared for the fall. And it would be helpful if this was posted somewhere. I know this is the first time I've seen it, but if we could get things like this either in the board packet or emailed ahead of time, it would just be really helpful.
Sure, I'd be happy to. And Phil did work on the two spots on local news this week, and I think we have a piece coming out in the Daily Progress as well. And we have four or five teachers participate in that as well.
Jennifer, my question is, could you elaborate on what the PLC looks like? And specifically, I'm wondering, since we're rethinking or we're having to rethink a lot of this, are we making teachers kind of reinvent the wheel? And what, isn't there like an opportunity to kind of have a continuity of curriculum across the board? Or is every teacher having to go and take their material and transport it, transfer it? Or could like there be a kindergarten, a kinder, kindergarten, a kindergarten team that, you know, is, I don't know. Do you get what I'm saying? Like, why are they sharing resources? Are all our teachers at home right now personally putting their worksheets and trying to translate their material? And how are they able to collaborate and share that so they're not doubling down on their work?
Exactly. And I think that's, so we'll be coordinating with the lead coach team who will help with each of the content areas to facilitate the division-level PLCs. It is always a sweet spot where we want to support and we want to have a greater level of continuity so we can share. So you start with pacing. We start with learning targets. And the more similar those are, the easier it is to share resources and even assessment tools. There is a level then of not wanting to take away the creativity that makes teaching wonderful. It's definitely why I left corporate America to come into an educational environment. At the same time, like you said, we don't need to reinvent the wheel. If someone's got something great, this allows us the ability to facilitate the sharing of that. And actually, within both Schoology and within CSO, we're able to do that resource sharing much more easily. But having, formalizing division-level PLCs gives us then the structure where the people connect. So they know they want to borrow, or they know that something's been posted that's a model. When we built the modeling units for the summer PD, we started with what is typically a first unit. So in each of our content areas, biology, you know, world history one, it's a first unit. That was the exemplar that we think is also important, so that people are starting with something that gives them that foundation.
So the teachers have access to kind of a robust platform to share the stuff and they can add on?
Exactly.
Other questions?
I had another one. Is part of what we're looking at now, obviously, is going to involve a lot of at-home help, right? Parents, guardians, older siblings often. And this may have been as part of these slides. Again, I apologize for, there's a lot of information. Are we, are we helping teachers work with families in that way? And will parents have any sort of training to do the help that there's, you know, to help their students?
That's definitely the sort of the next layer. So there are both within CSO and Schoology, there are resources that can be posted within courses so that teachers can have a how-to guide that parents can use, but then also working with the Department of Technology on resources that will be posted for parents. So that overview, one of the challenges is you don't want to bury in that type of parent support within the actual program. We want to have it outside of the program so they can click on it within our website. So that's something that we're definitely looking to have as we get into the back-to-school season. Both of the platforms do help provide us with a starting point for that, and then we can tailor it to our community.
Other questions? All right. So Jennifer, I guess one main takeaway we can take is that virtual learning this fall will be vastly different from what it was in the spring.
That is our goal, and believe me, that is not just because our parents and our students would like to be vastly different. Our teachers were exhausted, and they are excited to have a fresh start. We know it's going to be challenging. I keep being excited about the fact that we are beginning to feel that back-to-school sense, right? Where schools are going to open and we're going to get our kids back and we're ready for them. So it's been great to be able to meet their needs in terms of professional learning for that. Thank you all.
Thank you so much. All right, our next item, our policy review and revision on mask and face coverings. Ross Holden, let's hold it.
Hi, Mr. Page. Let me see if I can share my screen here. Did I do that successfully?
Yes.
Okay. Good evening, board members, and thank you for your time. This is a policy that we drafted with respect to masks and acceptable face coverings for those who are in our schools. It will apply to all students, staff, and visitors to all Albemarle County Public School schools, facilities, campuses, and on school transportation. The most important point is in the second paragraph, and that is the default is to wear a mask or acceptable face covering at all times regardless of physical distancing. The, really, the only arrows we have in our quiver to combat the pandemic is physical distancing, wearing a mask, washing of hands, and you've heard all of that. So this is our effort to have both students and staff and visitors be in our facilities as safely as we can provide it under the circumstances. There will be certain exceptions, for instance, eating and drinking, physical education activities, so long as whether in physical education or playing a game are at least 10 feet apart. If students are not participating at that moment, or they're on the sidelines or in the dugout, they will be required to wear masks regardless of the distance apart they may be. A mask could also be removed for specific instructional needs and activities and for a brief respite. This policy is one of general application. There will likely be regulations or standard operating procedures that may vary with either a classroom, the developmental level of the student, or even the school itself. Do we have, for instance, a classroom with a door outside, maybe in good weather? If a student needs just to take a break, a younger student in particular, from wearing a mask, could go outside for a minute or two. Maybe there's a place in the classroom where, away from the teacher and other students, where the mask could be taken off for a very, very short period of time. In addition, if there are students with documented medical conditions or disabilities or other special individualized needs, that could be an exemption as well. And that was a decision that will be made also by the school administration, teachers, school administration as well. With respect to correlations, we didn't want to, in first instance, we didn't want to make this something that would require a discipline. If a student either continues coming into school without a mask, forgetting a mask, and by the way, they'll be, if a student just forgets a mask, there'll be extra masks at school and on the buses because people will forget from time to time. But if it's a continuing problem, or if the student just refuses outright to wear a mask, our plan is to meet with students and parents, discuss the reason why we have this policy, the importance of it, to protect the safety and well-being of all those in our facilities. And hopefully, that will suffice. If not, then that student will be offered a virtual learning program and not remain in our schools. The, you know, we know that maybe just like students wear different clothes with respect to masks, that will, we want them to be appropriate. We want them to follow the code of student conduct and dress code so that there could be violations based upon what they're wearing. We certainly don't want anything that's lewd or lascivious, things of that nature, profane. So the masks and the displays that they may have on them will also be governed by our dress code policy. You should know as well, an important point, this policy has gone through a checklist, an equity checklist, and changes were made to incorporate those comments. In particular, violations will be evaluated for bias disparities on a periodic basis in all of the schools. Staff will also be required to wear masks. There are similar exemptions for them for eating and drinking. And when those exemptions apply, social distancing or physical distancing, as we prefer to call it, will also be in place. Violations will be dealt with in accordance with school board policy, GBC. Last, we are requiring visitors to wear a mask and anyone else who may be in the school from age two and above. If, for instance, the schools decide to have a program for staff, for children, or any other children, or any other program that may be part and parcel of, or using the space, that will require the, those students, those children, that staff to wear a mask as well. With respect to those students, those teachers who may be with children who are unable to wear a mask, we will have to determine on a case-by-case, a school-by-school basis where those children will be located. But those teachers, that's, those staff will have enhanced PPE for those students. And with that, happy to answer any questions I can.
Questions for Mr. Holden on our mask policy?
Is there guidance about the gym exception?
The guidance that we have from the Thomas Jefferson Health District and other sources, CDC, the state, is that, especially now because things have been evolving, is to wear a mask during physical education activities. So if they're going to be within 10 feet, if not, and they're running or they're doing another activity, they won't need to wear a mask. But as I said, if they're on the sideline, the guidance is that they should wear a mask regardless of physical distancing. This has been evolving over time. We've heard over the last several months, masks are not necessary if you're six feet apart, and they're not necessary if you're three feet apart. But the most recent guidance from the Thomas Jefferson Health District is masks are required or should be required at all times regardless of how far apart students may be.
But so I guess to me, then, that gym exception doesn't quite fit in with that. So that's, I was just asking if that particular exception has guidance?
On the 10 feet, I mean, I could check this later, but the health information that I've received is that so long as they are 10 feet apart on a field of play, that would be acceptable. But if they're standing on the sidelines, regardless of how far apart they are, that we need to wear a mask.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions on the mask policy?
Yes. Mr. Holden, what's the plan to train in-person staff on the policy? Because I'm assuming teachers are going to be the ones, and bus drivers are going to be the one enforcing it.
We will, you know, make that part of our return-to-school program. Let them know what the policy is. We'll certainly make it available as soon as possible and provide instruction as to what it means. Because I do know that teachers have expressed some concern, families as well. We want to make sure that it is as much as possible and as early and as often as possible price people of what the requirements are so that people are clear that masks can be required. As I said, the most important, when in doubt, in default, you're wearing a mask.
Are there any other questions on our mask policy? Our last call. All right. Thanks, Mr. Holden, for presenting the policy to us. Our next item, the new security paradigm by Dr. Nicholas King, Dr. King.
All right. So before Dr. King starts, Mr. Page, we'll bring the mask policy back on the consent agenda at our next meeting.
Okay, yes, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, I'm sharing.
Yeah.
Yes, yes.
Good evening, board members, and again, my name's Nicholas King. I'm the Director of Student Services. Thank you for your time this evening. Board members, my purpose tonight is to
Board members, my purpose tonight is to share with you some information that would really reflect our current thinking in terms of moving forward with our security program in schools. Specifically, mission will provide a response to the board's directive to the superintendent to begin looking at and making recommendations for a new paradigm for school safety to replace the previous program, which was characterized by the daily presence of school resource officers in some of our schools, particularly our high schools. At the outset of these discussions, some survey, surveying was done to speak to students and parents about their thoughts about our existing school safety and school security program. And so we thought, as we began thinking through this work, that that might be a good place for us to start to do some thinking about what we might do going forward, specifically from the perspective of identifying what parents and students saw as important in a school security program, and having that be part of what guided us going forward. And so there were three data points that kind of jumped out that I think might underpin some of the work that we're doing going forward. The first one was that when asked in that survey, in the survey, to rank the importance of safety-related tasks, our parents reported that monitoring school grounds was the most important task as they saw it. And I should note that that response of monitoring school grounds as most important was the response of virtually all parents and was the number-one response of all parents, regardless of race or ethnicity. The second point was that 65% of our parents responded to the survey, responded to the survey, that they felt like having some security personnel in our schools contributed to a safer learning environment. However, African-American, African-American parents were 10%, saw that responded, were 10% less likely to agree with this statement. So therein lies a point where we feel like we might be able to do some improvement in terms of our program. And then finally, 53% of our students responding to the survey reported that having security personnel made them feel safe at school. Yet 60% of African-American students either disagreed or were neutral on that particular question. So as we go forward, we would like to propose or suggest the new paradigm that we are going to design for our schools will be characterized by three prongs, if you will. The first is the creation of an in-house A C P S school security program. And I'll speak most specifically to each of these in just a moment. The second is hiring or identifying additional mental health counselors or professionals who would work in our schools with our students. And the final of the three prongs is the negotiation and execution of an interim statement of relationship between the A C P S and the Umar County Police Department that would be in effect for the 2021 school year to address security measures as we continue to move forward with our own A C P S program. So the first prong of the paradigm would be around creating an A C P S security staff. And just remember about what this staff would do and who they would be is that, first of all, they would, it would be staffed exclusively by A C P S employees. Everyone involved in this process, in that process or in that role would report directly to the school division. Those folks would be trained to support or provide for the safety needs of our schools. And the primary role would be to provide schools with additional resource that they could use before or even in lieu of reaching out to police for assistance, as well as to support various other needs of the school that might kind of spring up or that might, you know, be in existence at this point. It's important to note that this program and the staff members would not be managed by the A C P D, or it would not, or they would not be police officers. And then no police officers would be a part of this particular program. Another thing that's important to note is that these folks would not have any involvement with the school discipline process. We would continue with our way of operation that suggested school discipline is a matter for for the educators in the building. And so those folks would not have any involvement in the school disciplinary process with the possible exception of monitoring halls, you know, between classes, before and after school. Now, the program would be supervised. All those staff members would be supervised by the Director of Student Services. And we feel at this point like we should be able to have this program with the board's agreement operational by the start of the 2021, 2022 school year. So as we begin to think about how we might staff, you know, a program of this sort, you know, we really feel like there's a specific direction out there that we really should go in. The first thing that would be clear is that what we have in schools right now, based on the fact that we are moving police off out of our schools, what we have right now are school safety teacher assistants. These are A C P S employees that currently operate in several of our schools. These folks have not traditionally held safety-related responsibilities other than monitoring halls and escorting students. And it's important to note that there is no local or state certification for these staff members. They are indeed teacher assistants. They monitor halls and move students up and down the halls. And so since they, while they do do it, we think they do a good job. We don't think that that particular, those particular folks would necessarily be, would suffice and would meet all of our needs. What we do see is a viable option, and what we feel like is the appropriate way for us to move forward, is to identify and hire a team of school security officers. Our school security officers will be employees of A C P S, and they would help to ensure the safety, security, and welfare of students, faculty, staff, and visitors in their assigned schools. They would be certified by the state after specialized training in school security matters, including active shooter training, emergency response, emergency evacuation procedures, and threat assessments. It's important to note that the primary reason we feel like this is the appropriate way to move forward is because the school security officer program is well-established in the Commonwealth of Virginia. Many, many of the school divisions around the Commonwealth already have school security officer programs in place. It would meet the board's mandate in that these folks would not be police officers. But the other thing that we think is really critical is that the Commonwealth, through the Department of Criminal Justice Services, has a well-designed and well-developed and longstanding training and certification program for school security officers. And so we feel like this is something that we could implement in our schools relatively, relatively quickly, because we could look at what's being done in some other school divisions. And of course, we can take advantage of the services and support that the Commonwealth of Virginia offers for these particular positions. The next prong would be the hiring or identification of mental health providers. And I do want, there are lots of determinations to be made regarding the qualifications and program design here. We certainly could look at identifying certified mental health providers. Or the other idea is to look at individuals who could provide emotional support to our students, who aren't necessarily certified mental health providers, which would be sort of similar to the old therapeutic day treatment model. If you know very much about that, you would know that the state made some adjustments to that program over the last year. And so if we decided to move in that particular direction, there is a, the result of those changes is that many of the agencies that provided that service are no longer able to provide it. And so there is a wide swath of folks who were practitioners in those particular programs who would be out and available in the community to be hired. So that's one thing to think about. Options for staffing obviously would also include, you know, as we said, hiring individuals who would meet our expectations, or who would be A C P S employees. Or we could also look at the idea of partnering or contracting with community-based mental health agencies that already have staff in place and who could allow us to contract with them or reach agreements with them so that they would provide us with their existing staff to work in our schools on a contractual basis. One of the things that I do want to bring to the board's attention is that I do have some concern about, you know, the quickness with which we would be able to identify, you know, a significant cadre of certified mental health providers. One of the things that we know, based on just our work with some of our partners around the community, is that the, kind of the availability of those folks who carry that kind of certification is not great necessarily in this community. We work with our partners at Region 10 to provide S A P counselors in our high school. And I can tell you, there have been times when they have had, you know, positions for those that kind of laid open for two, three, four months until they could actually find people who meet those certification needs and are available to be hired. So that's something that we'll certainly have to think of and that we may face as we move forward with this approach. Again, we would hope to be in a position to operationalize this program by the start of next school year of 2021, 22. And then the final piece of our new paradigm would be the negotiation of a statement of relationship between A C P D and A C P S. One of the things that Attorney Holden wanted me to make sure to note is that a statement of relationship would be different than an M O U. This would not be an M O U. It would be, though, our mechanism for establishing channels of communication between our two agencies. And specifically, we would look to document a protocol by which A C P S can meet its responsibility to report required reporting, required reports of criminal behavior to the local law enforcement, which in many, in well, in several instances is required and mandated by Virginia law. And it would lay out the conditions under which police officers would come to school to meet with principals on a periodic basis to address matters that fall within the scope of this agreement. Again, though, it is important to note that it would not establish or call for the regular police presence in our schools. All right, so next steps. Obviously, first is continue the development and negotiation of the statement of relationship. Attorney Holden is working on that. I think as we speak, he is continuing to work with the A C P S's leadership structure and the attorney that works with them through the county. Second would be to identify mental health position program specifics. Again, as I stated, there's a good deal of work that needs to be done with that. At this moment, I'm not really aware of any school divisions who have similar programs of this kind. And so we'll have to really kind of beat the bushes to find whether or not those exist someplace and hopefully be able to get some information from that. And certainly, if we can identify a program that exists, we'll certainly have to go to the drawing board and develop something that we feel like will work for us. I feel certain that we have some, we have some relationships within the community, folks like Ready Kids, Region 10, who would be willing to come in and work with us and help us develop what would be an appropriate program around supporting the mental health of our students. And then finally, would be the development of a funding request, which would include specific program, program metrics for each of those sets of positions and specific, developing specific job descriptions for school security officers here in Omar County Public Schools, as well as specific job descriptions for mental health providers. At this point, I'd be glad to answer any questions you have.
Hi, Nick. A couple. One, as you well know, we had five officers in our schools until now. And so in terms of the school security, and I think a lot of people in the community think we haven't had them at all of our schools. We only had them at our high schools with a couple of floaters that, you know. So what is your conception of the number of school security officers that would come into this program? You're mute, you're mute.
Okay, I said, I'm sorry. I think my computer froze and I missed your entire question. Could you repeat it, please?
As you know, we have had only five S R Os at three of the high schools and then two sort of floating around. So if we're reconceptualizing school security with 25 schools, what are your thoughts about staffing for the school security officers? And then second, I agree, and I work in mental health in the community, and one of the biggest vacancies essentially is the number of child psychologists or child therapists. And that it's a really difficult thing to get. We have tried to beef up our mental health staffing across A C P S. So are you talking about working across, you know, broadening that? Or would this be a totally separate stream within the security? It seems to me that we should have a mental health staffing that went across issues.
So, you know, I think that issue and that question is frankly wide open at this point, because I don't think that we have any real strong sense at this moment about what that approach will look like. So I think we're open to looking, looking at it from every perspective as we move forward. You know, I think the one piece that's in my mind about it is that we will be looking at an approach that would be more clinical than what we have with traditional school counselors. But beyond that, I don't think we've moved very far in terms of our conceptualization of what we're going to do. So I think we're going to be open to thinking about that. And that's why I even threw out the idea of going something similar to the T D T model, which again tends to be more clinical, but doesn't really require us to identify people who are, you know, certified mental health providers. So I think that's wide open at this moment.
Okay, back to the first part about what are you thinking about the numbers of security officers? Are we talking about 25 schools worth or?
So I'd say at the beginning, I'm willing to identify and hire the number that you are willing to fund.
We're relying on your expertise to guide us in this, though, too.
I think I've thought about it from frankly, two perspectives at this point. And one perspective would be that we would identify a cadre of four, and that would find us focusing our structure in a way that would be similar to what the S R O structure was like. So there would be, they would be kind of based in the high schools, and then they would be assigned to a number of additional schools that they would support. The other, the other way I've kind of thought about it and conceptualized it, though, would be that then there would, there would be nine. And if there were nine, they would then be, there will be one based in every high school and every middle school. And then they would also be assigned to support elementary schools as well. I honestly think, and one of the things that I shared with Matt, Dr. Haas, was that, you know, I think it really depends on kind of the quality of people that we're able to find. And based on that quality, you know, frankly, to, you know, break it down to brass tacks, what kind of the cost is going to be? I think if we look at school security officers, we're going to be looking for folks who are a bit of a higher caliber. And so that would suggest to me that we would probably need to consider paying them, you know, a reasonable, a reasonable amount of money. And certainly, that will, that will impact how many that we would be able to put into place.
Dr. King? First of all, welcome back.
First of all, welcome back. It's good to see you back. I hope you're doing well.
I am, thank you.
Good, good, good. You've answered a couple of my questions already in terms of is anybody else in the state doing a program like this? And we're not sure, you know, but, but, you know, I think you were saying you beat the bushes and find out, which, which, you know, would be obviously a great thing. And I was going to ask about hiring security people and, but, you know, how they come to be trained. You know, and you mentioned that you would be finding out whether that kind of training exists, you know, from the state. And I think that would be an important part because, you know, a lot of training was done locally through ACPD as well as, you know, through our services. So, you know, just going to two other quick things. I mean, one is, is that, and I'm not being critical. I'm still, I'm going to try and digest this, you know, a lot once you see the or have the presentation in hand is we obviously want our parents and our students to feel that, and our staff, our teachers or staff to feel safe in the schools. And I mean, so one question gets into what happens in emergency situations? Is this, is this the next policeman or woman who, let's just say, police person, you know, who gets the 911 call? Is it just the next person who's going to get that and come to the schools? In the past, it would have been, you know, somebody who's a security officer. And then secondly, you know, just to make sure that people are not feeling like we're doing mental health light or security light in terms of this to replace what it is that we have in place. And that gets back into the safety issue. Broad, broad questions, but.
So let me, let me start by clarifying if I suggested that we would be looking to find out if there is training available for school security officers. Let me correct that. We know that that exists. It is longstanding. It's provided by DCJS. It's there. It's available and it's something that we could provide to folks that we hire immediately. It's, in fact, DCJS has moved their training. I was looking at the other day. They've made it online. So we could provide that training to staff members immediately.
Okay, thank you for that.
Yes, sir. As to your second question, I hope Attorney Holden won't get me for this, but I am hoping that part of what will be a part of his negotiation with the school, with the police department, that that negotiation will include that, that kind of issue in terms of who it is that will respond to our, to our calls. And, you know, it is, it is our hope, I think, that where possible, we will still be able to reach out directly to the members of the division within the school, within the police department who have traditionally worked with us. Because I do think that's an important point, Mr. Ocaro, that, you know, when we do make a call to the police and we have an issue that needs to be addressed, I do think it's critical that to the extent possible, the responding officer be someone who has some history of working with schools and has some understanding of how schools operate as opposed to necessarily just the, you know, the next officer who's up. So I'm really hoping that we'll be able to address that as part of the, as part of the, part of the statement of relationship with the police department.
Thank you, Dr. King.
And I would just note, we actually do already have one staff member in our division who is a trained school security officer. And so we've already had some experience with that training in terms of staff members in our school division. So again, we know that it's there, available, and it is high-quality training.
Are there other questions related to security?
I have a couple of questions. First, yeah, thank you, Dr. King, for all your work in this. And also to reiterate what John said, it's really great to have you back. I just, I don't know a lot about school security officers and I would like to know more about that because, you know, you mentioned that they are in several divisions in, across the Commonwealth. And I'm curious what their relationship is. If in those divisions, they also use SROs and if what the difference or relationship is, or if they replace them in those divisions. And I also appreciate that you gave the demographic data for the the survey data because I think for a lot of us, anti-racism is a very important part of this move. For me, it's the key point. And so I just want to know where anti-racism fits into school security officer roles and how that will continue to help us move forward with that.
Well, so I think the first response to that, if I could respond to the first question is, I know that many of the larger school divisions use the SSO program. And I think that the mixed bag across the Commonwealth. Some that use the SSOs in addition to SROs because most school divisions aren't able to obviously offer an SRO for every school. So usually there is kind of a mix of those things in terms of a mixed bag of both SROs and SSOs and other kinds of security staff in larger school divisions. To answer your second question and really to address the first question as well, the important thing I think about our move to SSOs and what it brings to the table for us is the fact that these folks will be our employees. And we can dictate actually the answer to both questions that you just asked. We'll be able to dictate what their relationship is to the police department. If at some point the board believes and the division believes that it's appropriate for there to be a relationship between our SSOs and the police department, because they'll be our employees, we'll be able to dictate that there be that relationship. If the board and the division decides that that's not a relationship that we want to ever have exist, again, these will be our employees and we'll be able to dictate that. The second part of that issue is, is that as those folks will be our employees, just as every other school division employee is going to be exposed to our work around anti-racism over the next year and a half, these folks will be a part of that process as well. As again, they would be our employees. And so just as we require all other employees to do the anti-racism work, as just as all of our employees this year will be a part of courageous conversations around race, folks will be employees and they'll be expected to be involved in that work as well. And so I think that's one of the things that really benefits us from that perspective. Obviously, while, you know, we felt like the ACPD did a relatively good job in, you know, providing training for their employees around, you know, some of these issues, we weren't able to dictate exactly the way they trained their folks because they weren't our folks. So that's what I think, that's how I think we'll be able to address that and really kind of continue to move forward as a division in terms of the anti-racism work.
Any other questions for Dr. King? One thing, thank you for already said it, but since that person would be our employee, then also CRT training would be involved too, right? As a part of the anti-racism policy.
I would, I would, I would imagine so, yes, sir. And again, just, you know, anything that we saw is necessary. I think would be there and we would frankly just have carte blanche to provide, you know, to provide and require training as we saw fit.
We, we would also be looking to have a diverse cadre of the resource, of the school security officers. That's another thing to take a look at. And then one thing I would say is that it would be good to know as we make our way through to what extent the board would like for Dr. King to come back with an update and, you know, give us an idea of what date you might like that because as we move into the funding request development season, we will, right now, we contribute roughly a quarter of a million dollars toward the School Resource Officer Program. So in moving into fiscal year 21, we would have access to that funding because we would not be contributing it. So that could be a placeholder for us to use to fund a school security officer program. And what we would do, what we would ask Dr. King and his staff to do is to put together a funding request initiative around that so that we could flesh it out more for the board and tie a logic model to it along with metrics like we do our other initiatives that we do. So that's, that's just an overview of timeline. So it would be helpful to know when you would like another update or would you like us to do that when we're going into the funding request season?
So I just have a question actually about that question then. So does that mean that we will be paying that $256,000 while we have 10% of our students in schools for the foreseeable future?
We will, that, yes, that was already part of the budget adoption process. So for that to change, the school board would need to request to the board supervisors to reappropriate that funding.
And are they, so what does September 8th look like in terms of SROs?
There will not be SROs as directed by the school board.
I have a question. I don't know if it's for Nick or for Matt. Back to the mental health subject matter. In the last funding request before we had to cut it by 20%, there was a position for sort of a mental health director looking at mental health needs across the school division. I'm wondering, I don't feel comfortable in sort of populating the security initiative with mental health counselors unless we look at a broader overview of what our mental health infrastructure should look like or could look like or does look like. So I think that for me would be in parallel to the school security officer work. I don't know how we get there, but.
No, that's good input, of course.
So Kate, you asking for more details on the mental health part of the program? Right?
Yes. What we have in place now, what we had contemplated in the last funding request and approved before we had to unapprove it. And what, you know, yes.
We've had.
It doesn't have to be, you know, a full program evaluation at all, but I just want to know what's out there, where are they deployed essentially?
Yeah, I think that would be a really good strategy moving forward. We are, we're looking at alternative funding sources for for, for mental health counseling. Because as you can imagine, we are not in a position necessarily to fund anything out of, certainly not out of this year's spending plan. And having said that, in looking at those alternative funding sources, if we are able to acquire funding to use through grants or some other way of doing it, right now, we've kind of shifted our posture away from saying we want to have someone centrally directing, you know, that kind of work because with the COVID-19 pandemic and the recession, we really want to look at boots on the ground. Not that we students don't, haven't always had mental health needs and that's a priority. It's just, I think that if we can get staff closer to the students at this time out in the community and out with their families, that that would be a better strategy. And then continue to have some of our staff just wear two hats to do that kind of supervision like Dr. King does and Kevin Kirsch and Jay Thomas. So they, there is oversight of our school counselors. So we feel like we can, we can keep that in place. But if we were able to get funding, we just want to have the staff most directly contacted with the students.
Okay, so I think we need to tell Dr. King and his team when we would expect another update. Also, maybe what the details we might need in the funding request and any information probably on the mental health aspect of this. So any guidelines for him related to any three of those, any one of those three items? Date, funding request and mental health picture.
Well, I guess part of that is a question for you, Matt. When do you need that input? I mean, I would say we certainly would have to have some input by November.
Yeah, I think that would be good. If we could, that's, that will fall in alignment with our funding request development. And so we're pretty detailed with what we provide. And I feel like, given the fact that we would not be spending the funding on the school resource officers next year, I'm not going to take it for granted or make a complete assumption that that's funding we could just convert into school resource or school security officers, excuse me. Because we still aren't too sure about what our funding forecast and our revenue projections are going to be for next school year. However, that's just what I'm thinking that we would be able to provide that. Because there are several functions that school resource officers helped us with, like threat assessments that were really strong in terms of anti-racist work and also equity work to help protect students from being suspended out of school by using that process. So there are some pieces that I think we really want to have as part of our program. So we're going to, we're going to make a pitch to have it in the funding request. And then we'll work through with the board to prioritize. I did have a meeting today with Jeff Richardson to talk a little bit about the funding request season coming up. And we'll be, we'll be meeting in the future as a steering team to start laying out that process, which will be, given the fact that our revenue projections aren't, aren't great, you know, it'll be a somewhat streamlined process, I can imagine.
Okay, any other questions or comments related to this? So we agreed on the November report? Okay, any other comments related to Dr. King's report?
I would like to ask the rest of the board. This is my first year dealing with the budget. So I just, I'm curious of what the appetite is to reallocate that funding for this year.
I don't think legally we can. What we'd have to do is ask the board supervisors to reallocate the money. And the board supervisor is going to take that well. We've already funded the, the police based upon that allocation. So yes, we'll reallocate it. We'll take it away from you. We'll give it to them ourselves. I don't think it's a situation where we can say, hey, look, we're going to take the 265 and we're going to use it the way we want to spend it. I think the board of supervisors will not take that well.
Right. They would have to make up the difference. Yeah.
Yeah, it's already been transferred. So that's, you're correct, Mr. Oberg, that we would, it would be, it would be requesting a reappropriation from the board supervisors from their funding back to us.
Okay, so does that satisfy your question, Mrs. Lee?
It does. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Thanks, Dr. King, for your report tonight. And we'll be looking to hear from you at latest by November, right?
Yes, sir.
Good to have you back, Nick.
Yeah, good to have seen you back.
Thank you all.
All right. Any other business by board members or our superintendent?
I wanted to give Dr. McGlaughlin a chance to respond to the policy question from Ms. Lee from earlier.
Yeah, I just wanted to let you know that we will be getting a written response.
Yeah, I just wanted to let you know that we will, um, be getting a written response out to the board, uh, by the first of next week. And we can bring that back to the, uh, to the next board meeting on the consent agenda for, uh, for board approval at that time.
Thank you.
I have a few minor things that I think are just worth repeating real quick. One, from the consent agenda, I'm still looking to see a box of the equity checklist and knowing that it's checked for each policy and signed off on. Two, and I think it's just, I mean, maybe other board members, I don't know how you feel, but I feel like we need to get this stuff before the day of the meeting. Cause it is really hard to get all this information. I can't even go back on the slides to check anything because I don't have access to the, the, the PowerPoint even during the presentation. And then, um, so those are the two negative things. Sorry about that. Feedback, constructive criticism. And then the last thing is for our meetings, and I don't know, to use Judy's words, what the board appetite is for at our next meeting. I would really appreciate if we, um, did a walkthrough of what it's, the days are going to look like for parents. Um, you know, we heard a lot today about the teachers.
That's a good idea, Katrina.
Yeah, and I know that Charlottesville did a mock thing and Matt, I've talked with you on this and I just want to see if other board members are aligned with getting some kind of walkthrough about what is it going to look like?
I think that's important.
As the one who's going to have to start monitoring when my child gets up in the morning, I agree. And then it would be a good value.
And I would say that's what we'd actually, we'd heard from, I think, at pre-agenda. So that's the direction we were moving. And I already have staff, uh, working on that for the next work session.
And Debbie, yeah, I feel awkward even bringing it up, except that I don't want to operate, it's kind of like a little bit, this is my first, you know, I have only done like two pre-agendas. So it feels a little weird because I'm just coming up with topics that seem interesting to me, but I don't know if there's a lot of interest in them. So I guess I just wanted to put that on people's radars.
We elected you, Katrina.
Just you wait, Dave. I'm taking that as a blank check.
Okay. So you are the conscience of the school board. Right?
No.
No. Any other items?
I also wanted to second, I just wanted to second what she said about having to process all the information really quickly and not being able to go back. And also for the public to be able to see, um, the presentations and process that as well. So, I, I second that. I, I would want to see it earlier in the week.
Okay, we will expect staff then to work toward meeting, um, those expectations for us. Any other items from the, uh, board or from the superintendent?
Okay, I do have one other thing then seeing no others. But during the past two or three months, the members of the board have received a huge volume of emails as a result of the effects of the COVID pandemic. We received emails expressing opinions on how we should reopen the schools. We received emails expressing opinions on how our students should be taught during a pandemic crisis. Right this period of receiving tons of emails, board members follow, followed our usual protocol of individually answering emails addressed to that board member directly. When responding to emails, each board member aims to communicate in a timely, professional and courteous way. Also, board members who use social media aim to use that platform in a way that it exhibits professionalism. When that communication might be linked to the board's activities. During this period in which a vast amount of emails have been exchanged, if any parent or community member received communications either directly or indirectly that failed to conform to our expectations of professionalism, on behalf of our board, I sincerely apologize. Also on behalf of the board, I express our regrets to any parent or family who were offended by any response that they may have received. So any other comments from any other board members regarding anything?
Graham, I would like to publicly say that you have done an amazing job with emails. And I appreciate the personalized responses that you have provided people with. You're doing a much better job than I'm doing responding to even just the ones addressed to me. And Matt, that same, um, same thing goes for you, Matt. I've really appreciated reading your responses to people. They've been helpful to me. So thank you, guys. It's incredibly difficult time and you are both doing a good job in your responsiveness.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Katrina.
We, uh, we, we've, uh, we will get the board, uh, information earlier. Um, we, I think we had tried to work really hard to get our presentations put up by Monday evening. It's been a struggle, um, this summer and, uh, but we will get back to that protocol and, uh, I'm sorry, I, I do not like to disappoint the board members as far as having information that you need in a more timely fashion. So we will work on that as a team and support each other and make that happen.
Okay. So if nothing else, thanks to all of the staff who presented reports tonight. Thanks to our public who have listened in and good night to all of you and have a good night. Bye.
Bye, everyone.
Bye.
Nice job, Graham.
Thank you very much, Matt.